Call the meeting order this time. Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering. President, Mr. Murray.
President.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Mrs. Hickenbauer.
Present.
Mr. Guzzu.
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is adoption of agenda.
So I just will, I will note that during the public comment period, Mr. Jonathan Smith is going to give construction update. And I just have a couple of notes regarding attendance and the science labs that I'll share during that. But as far as actually agenda items, Mr. Guzzu, there's nothing to, I have no changes or amendments to that.
Is your motion approved agenda?
I make a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda. I'll say it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzu?
Yes.
Item of public comments.
I think I just kind of want to note an attendance comparison, Mr. Guzzu, compared to the end of school last year on August, or August, May 26th, which just seems like yesterday, to Friday evening. I appreciate Ms. Dameron putting this together for me. Russell County High School ended the year with 825 students. We currently have 859 students, so that's a plus of 34 students for Russell County High School. Russell County Middle School ended the year with 671 students. They currently have 664 as of Friday afternoon. That's a decrease of seven students. James Elementary School ended the year with 450. On Friday, they had 457, so that's a plus of seven. Russell Springs Elementary School ended the year with 590. They started on Friday at 574. That's a decrease of 16. And Salem had 367 in May, and they had 365 on Friday. That's a decrease of two. So net total for the district, we were up 16 students, which that's always a good thing. We ended the year last year with 2,903 students, and we currently have 2,919 as of Friday afternoon. And this time of year, you could just about do it by the hour, couldn't you, Ms. Dameron? And it changes that much. And typically, it kind of settles down after Labor Day because of people moving and things like that. And this does not count preschool, of course, preschool hasn't started yet. So for, for, for the district overall, we are up 16, 16 students. Also, I just want to note with the science labs, the bids came in approximately $500,000, higher than the overall, than the overall budget, but that was, if you all recall, we anticipated that in case we didn't have enough funds, so we bid out the science labs and the freshman dock on their own. And that was the part that was essentially $500,000. So we met with Sherman Carter Barnhart Architect and having some conversations, and they're looking at some things that could, could reduce the cost. Also, we do have the capital outlay money in escrow that would, that we could help cover and compensate for that for. Looking at, Mr. Guzzu, a special board meeting here, I'll get with you in maybe a week or two, where they will have some final bid numbers to present to you all after they kind of negotiate some prices and things with that. So, uh, looks like we can do them all, we'll just need to use some of the capital outlay funds to, to do that with. Pardon me. If they're ready, I'd love to be, well, we should, yeah, I'm looking, probably next week, yeah, yeah, because you're surgery. At this time, board members, you all care to join Doc Oaks in the front row? Thank you for saving this.
No problem.
Just want to give everybody a quick update on the progress of the athletic facilities. Just got some updated pictures. These are really as of last week, probably a few things changed last few days, but been a whole lot of work done in the last 30 to 45 days. Have had a little rain, but the weather has cooperated a little bit. So what you're looking at there, that is the concession and restroom building. All that plumbing's been rushed in, been inspected. Foundation block's been laid. They're actually probably, probably today and tomorrow, we'll be getting rock in, we'll be getting that ready for the slat door. So it's well underway, ready to start going up on that part of the building. This is the only section of retaining wall along what would be the back of the baseball field that we lack to pour. They're working their ways that way to tie the thing together. I'll show you here in a minute of what all the wall has been poured, but that's the only remaining section of the retaining wall behind the baseball. This is actually where the back cages are, the club's back cages. That's the only section we lack right now. Uh, this is looking, you're looking at the home bleacher foundation. All the foundations are in, two of the sections are slabbed and poured on either end. The center section, we've left it out because there's some roughing stuff got to go in there to go up to the press box that will sit where the bleachers are. So that, as you can see, the pyramid, you'll see again, the lights are already up, poles are up, fixtures are on those. So you can see that retaining wall there, there's a section of the retaining wall that basically runs down the first base side of the baseball field. Uh, this kind of shows you it's taking shape. You can kind of see the outline of the track that's looking straight across the football field. And you can see the track at the edge of the home bleacher foundation there. Uh, this is looking on the end closest to what will become the new tennis courts. You can see it's starting to take shape. They've got the curves around the inside of the section of the track, which kind of separates that and the football field. So while that concrete's been going in, there's been a whole lot of concrete poured in the last 30 days. You see the concrete trucks, they've been on a straight run down here for the past 30 days. Uh, this is just a close-up of that bleacher foundation. That's the home bleacher section. Of course, you, that metal section there, it's actually open under the bleachers like we talked about. So when the team enters the field, they're going to go out right on the 50-yard line underneath the bleachers. Uh, this just kind of shows there where, how close you got to concession restroom area. It's right behind the home bleachers. So as you're coming out of bleachers, concession stand, restroom is being located right behind that. You can see the areas of the retaining wall there, a lot of that wall is, is in, some of that's pre-tall wall, it's 12 feet tall in some sections. Uh, this is looking at, this was change order you all approved at the last board meeting. You can see that's where the future building pad will be for what will be a future locker room. That pad's getting built, should have it rocked probably this week, which you can see there, that, that going in there behind. And that shows the access that you get to the field where ambulance is and everything when you get to the field. This will actually be a payback that you get to the field.
Jonathan, while you're there, you have that laser, point to that part right there at the rear of those buses, because that's what I meant with Danny about the date.
Yes.
That, that is, the head wall on a drainage pipe is way this side, and it's just going to be a ravine that can't be mowed or anything. And so I've asked Danny to get with Mr. Smith to do a, a change order proposal request to see the details of what it would cost to extend the drainage pipe out there, extend the head wall, and then fill that in there, so it's not just a useless grown-up mess. Because it wasn't included in the scope that we have right now, but it's just kind of a waste area.
And we have enough material on the site to fill that. If we get the pipe in, there's enough excess dirt there that we can fill that. Don't have to bring any neat fill. This, uh, this is actually, I was actually standing up on the, would be the visitor bleachers and baseball, looking back. You can see that, that whole section of the retaining wall down the first base side, that is all in, are complete. You can see the pipe inside it there, that's ready to be backfilled. Uh, you can see the tennis courts over on the far side, I've got a blow up for those here, you can see in just a minute. There is what will become the new tennis courts. You can see all the lights for the tennis court are in. Uh, that pad's pretty much subgrade. We're short focused and I'm getting the football field, track and all that done first, but you can see that area of what will become the new tennis courts. That will be right behind, adjacent to the new track. This is just another shot of that pad over there, you can see a little bit better where that future pad for the football locker room will be. Uh, this is just an overall shot, you can see the size of this thing. This is standing right on the fence there behind the football field. You can see how it's taking shape, what it's going to look like. And you see the outline of the track and the foundations, of course, of the home bleachers there. Uh, this is standing, I was actually standing up on the bleachers visitor side. This is looking directly about where the 50-yard line will be of the football field. You can see right through there is where the center of the field is. And you can see how, how big and massive site this is of what dirtwork they've got done in the last little bit. And of course, the mods group that's doing the turf and the undergrounds, they've been working non-stop pretty much for about the last three weeks. And they've gotten the way along on a lot of their underground stuff, play and play them. Any questions?
Thanks, sir. A lot of time.
Next item is recognition, David Rector, National High School Athletic Coach Association, Top 3000 Year finalist. Lori Lloyd, Kentucky Elementary School Counselor of the Year. Jason Davidson, West Kentucky University, 2023, Distinguished Educator Award finalist.
Mr. Davidson could not be with us tonight, told him that we, we're playing soccer. I told him we're going to catch up at the, at the next, at the next board meeting. It goes without saying, what a, what a successful baseball program we have, right, Coach? The most successful athletic program we have, right, Coach? Come on up here. It, it is, it is. When we get a new coach and they ask me questions or say anything like that or how to model, I always tell them, you need to talk to Coach Rector. Because he is the model coach on how to do all things right when it comes to athletics. And the amount of respect that Coach, you take it, yeah, I'm holding up a little bit of that. The coach carries and, and demands, and he works both ways, is just phenomenal. So to be a finalist in a national award, a third finalist, I can't think of anybody any more deserving than Coach David Rector. The National High School Athletic Coaches Association presents David Rector with recognition of National High School Athletic Coaches Association, National High School Coach of the Year, Top 3000 Finalist, Russell County Schools, April 21st, August 21st, 2023. We sure do appreciate the gesture.
Speech.
My, yes, he already cracked.
Okay.
Mr. Ford want to be speak? I won't, uh, hold you too long, but thank you, the Board of Education, for allowing me to be the coach here. You know, it takes an army to do it. My assistant coaches, the family, the parents and all. It's a, it's a program that's been established for a long time. I'm just trying to keep it going and trying to keep it where it needs to be. You know, there's a lot of people involved, and I thank you guys very much for all that you do for that. But I was thinking about what I was going to say, but just real quick, you know, obviously, they flew the file late out to Lincoln, Nebraska, and I spent a week out there with a lot of coaches. But, uh, you know, when you're sitting there with coaches from Colorado and Florida and Louisiana and North Dakota, Minnesota, and it's very proud for me to represent Kentucky, but most of all, represent Russell County. And a small school we had, and this is from last year, you know, carrying over because it takes, they don't have their national convention until July. So it was from last year's season, but very humbling experience, very honored. But one thing I will, will say, you know, all of us had to give a little speech, I guess, a presentation, but the guy before me got up there to give his presentation, and his name was Mark Johnson from Colorado. And he got to talking, and he said, this will be my 52nd year at Cherry Creek High School. And I thought, oh, man, I'm just 52 years old myself. But anyway, he went and, went and, uh, very, very good to sit there with that man. He's 79 years old, this would be his last year, and he was just full of knowledge and very well deserved the honor. But it was just a privilege to sit there with him. So, uh, I forgot to do the math on that, that, you know, 52, 79, that's 27 more years that he went on past his retirement. I think he retired at 54 as a teacher, but the accomplishments that he had over, over the years is just unreal. So for me, just to be there, it was just, just an unreal feeling. Thank you guys again, and thank everybody in the meeting.
They, they want, um, they want, sorry, Mr. Hood or Mr. Guzzu, shake your hand as you go through here, Mr.? Give that to Coach. Here's your cover, Coach. Now, this is, we're continuing in some of the good stuff. Ms. Lori, I'm afraid Ms. Rita will try to take credit for this for having Mrs. Ford's grade. Not only did Ms. Lori have me, I mean, Ms. Rita had me, she also had Ms. Lori. We broke her in, right? But this is another awesome award for another awesome person and guidance counselor at Jamestown Elementary School. Um, this is a statewide award for Ms. Lori's association, but Ms. Lori was nominated and received the Kentucky School Counselor Association's Elementary School Counselor of the Year. Uh, not for our region, not for our district, but for the entire state of Kentucky. And so that is phenomenal. If you, I was going to look that up, Ms. Lori, you might know it, how many hundreds of elementary schools there are in Kentucky? I don't know it off the top of my head, but there's a lot, folks. And so Ms. Lori is the Elementary School Counselor of the Year, and always there, definitely there for students and families, but she's there for faculty and staff as well. Such a hard worker. I remember years, years ago, this is something funny, hold on, back to back to Lord, but she said, "Man, I prefer staying at the school and scrub toilets than coming in early and do a busting," or something like that. But it was funny, because Ms. Lori and I talked for several years together, went to school together. So it's just an honor for Ms. Lori, come on up, to present this with to you this evening. So this read, Russell County Board of Education presents the Lori Lloyd in recognition of Kentucky School Counselor Association's Elementary School Counselor of the Year, Russell County Schools, August 21st, 2023. Appreciate it. Say anything you want to do.
Well, this is actually my 27th year of teaching. I taught two years with preschool and then 12 years with third grade. And this is my 13th year as the counselor at Jamestown. And I do love what I do. I love working with kids. I love being at school. I love the teachers, the staff, bus drivers, the cooks, the janitors. Um, I really love just being at school and, and helping any way I can. I love being with the kids and helping with families any way I can. So I truly feel humbled and honored to receive this award, and I appreciate you all recognizing me here tonight and, and this white chip for knowing me. So thank you so much.
So Lori will be recognized at her association's conference in September. I didn't know she was 27. Right, it's in September, it's next month, right?
Yeah, 27, yes. But thank you so much.
Two big grandma.
We're very proud.
Yeah, that's the best.
Next item on the agenda, the consent agenda items.
So we have our previous meeting minutes, thing to bill, school activity fund reports, field trips, and Ms. Carnes will present the monthly treasure report.
Treasury report for the month of July 2023. The balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $18,147,655.87. Total receipts for the month were $2,896,429.87. Total receipts and beginning balance together was $21,448,574. Disbursements for the month were $2,150,769.42. And that brought our balance to the close of the month to $18,893,316.32. In fund balances for the general fund, Fund 1, $6,356,626.88. Special projects, Fund 2, $284,064.98. And the district activity fund, Fund 21, $3,004.7. Capital outlay, Fund 10, $131,750. FSPK building fund, Fund 320, $1,296,484.1. Construction fund, Fund 360, $9,882,605.27. Debt service is Fund 400, $0. Food service, Fund 51, $935,153.41. And the new sharing fund, Fund 7,003,627.70. And the total cash advantage for all the funds there is $18,893,316.32.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. I will note that is a, and we did have a good healthy balance, but half of that beginning balance is construction funds. So it's, it's with the projects, so, that's a bond sale. There are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items.
I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzu?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is 2023, 2024 tax rate, proposed tax rate, tax rate reduction for real estate, personal property, tangible, motor vehicle, watercraft, and utility tax rates unchanged.
So KRS 160.470 requires local Board of Education to set tax rates within 45 days of receipt of certified property assessments. We received all of our tax reports from the Kentucky Department of Education on August 3rd, 2023. So that clock, if you will, starts ticking at that point. Our current tax rate, as you all know, is 51.1 for real estate, 51.1 for personal property that's intangible, 52.2 for motor vehicle, watercraft, and 3% for the utility tax. So I'm proposing that we reduce the tax rate to 50.8 for real estate and personal property, for real estate, and the personal property remain at 51.1, motor vehicle, watercraft tax remain at 52.2, and the current utility tax 3% remain unchanged. As you all know, property valuations have continued to, to go up, so we can decrease the real estate tax rate to 50.8 and still generate additional revenue as compared to last year, equivalent to 4% additional revenue, doesn't require a, a hearing or anything like that. And all of the tax reports, of course, are, are attached. So this is two years in a row that we have reduced the tax rate and still can generate additional revenue for the district. A cautionary tale, if you will, it's a two-edged sword, Ms. Carnes can speak to this. When, when we generate, when, when a school district generates more funds locally, your state support through SEAC is decreased. Uh, because that's what SEAC's all about, it's about equalization. So we're getting more local funds, so in turn, it, it is a decrease on state money. It shouldn't be more than what we're going to have in additional revenue, but it's certainly a loss of revenue on the SEAC side. Ms. Carnes, pretty simple, that's just how it works on your SEAC. So they say, okay, you're, you're generating more money locally, you don't need as much help on land terms from the state, because that's what SEAC does, it equalizes, it helps to equalize education funding across the state. Uh, but this is good, I mean, that we can do this. I just want folks to understand that when, when we do do this, we will have it offset some in, in SEAC funding. But it's still the additional funds and keeping everything else the same. I know you all have all the tax reports, you know. So I recommend the following tax rates, 50.8 for real estate and the personal property, tangible remain at 51.1, motor vehicle, watercraft tax remain at 52.2, and the current utility tax at 3% remain unchanged. There for a while, everything was 52.2 except the utility. It kind of worked well, didn't it, Ms. Carnes, when it's like that? But now we've got to remember three different numbers and then the utility tax.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickenbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzu?
Yes.
Next item is owner architect agreement for Russell County High School Science Labs classroom renovation project.
Yeah, this is a very similar agreement that you all seen for all of our architects, any project that require an architect, pretty much standard with the Kentucky Department of Education. And this one is specific to the high school science lab classroom renovation project. So I recommend approval of the owner architect agreement with Sherman Carter Barnhart, their architect of record, for the high school science labs and classroom renovation project as presented. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzu?
Yes.
Architect and construction management agreements, Russell County Old Area Technology Center renovation.
Okay, so this one's just a little bit different because we have CM, Construction Management on the Old Area Technology Center in addition to, of course, it's a much larger project, in addition to the architectural agreement. So at the, November 21st, 2022, meeting of the Russell County Board, Board of Education, it was at that time that Branson Construction was selected as construction management and the Sherman Carter Barnhart for the Russell County ATC building renovation as, as the architect. So here's the agreement for the owner architect agreement and the owner construction agreement for the old Russell County Area Technology Center building. And just a side note, we've been having several meetings with them. Of course, you all approved schematic design, and they're getting really close to having construction documents ready for the boards' approval. But Old ATC.
Does that one have a name or anything?
We haven't yet, no. I know, we don't, we don't need that, we don't, I know. Yeah, we needed some type of multipurpose something, yeah, yeah. No, I don't want to put lettering out there that says Old ATC. So I recommend approval of the contract with Sherman Carter Barnhart and Branson Construction as presented. They give orders to the Kentucky Department of Education, review and approve.
Make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hickenbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzu?
Yes.
Next item is contracts and memorandum of agreements.
So the following contracts and memorandums of agreements are attached with your review and approval. and approval. We have had previously presented several MOUs for mental health services, and this is another one for Bluegrass Professional Counseling, our Lake Cameron Head Start Grantee Program for the local Head Start Program, and then our certificate of Head Start Full Utilization, and again, I know you all seen these for several years in a row, and that just simply means that we'll work with Head Start to ensure that they are full before we take preschool students. An updated agreement with Cornerstone Diagnostics, because, you know, they used to be premiered and had names changed. We have here our motor vehicle driving record checks, that's required by our insurance company, anybody that drives a board vehicle, a board-owned vehicle, that we have to have a motor vehicle check on them, they will do that and run that through their office. And then, of course, our drug testing for employees and for students, the breath alcohol test, clearing query for bus drivers, we have to run that every year, that's a requirement now, has been for a few years. If a bus driver does a national search every year for any traffic violations, and then also the pricing for the rapid saliva alcohol test and prices for any expert witness testimony or consultation if ever needed. We have the updated agreement for the Friendship Building America Grant Program, that's the program that Mr. Sloan is over, and then we have the Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, and Ninth Sexual Risk Avoidance Education and Positive Potential Program with the Lake Cameron District Health Department that we've done now for several years. I just wanna note that parents have to give an active permission slip before students can participate in that. It's not one that goes home and then, if the students don't wanna participate, they have to turn it in and say no. It's one if they want students to participate, they have to select yes, and then student, or parents and guardians will have the opportunity to review any of the curriculum and any of the resources that the Health Department will be using with that program. We've already met with the Health Department, we know the requirements, and making certain that we meet everything that's required for that. So, I recommend approval of the contracts and memorandum of agreement that's been approved by the Board of Attorney.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to have effect.
Second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Vazuk?
Next item on the agenda is out of state and overnight trips.
Paul and Gregson submitted trip request that include overnight travel, Russell County High School marching bands, September 22nd to the 24th to Chattanooga, Tennessee for Bands of America Regional, January 25th to the 27th, that's the Western Kentucky University Honor Band, February 7th to the 10th, 2024, Louisville, Kentucky for the KMEA Allstate Band, and February 22nd to the 24th, to Murray State University for Honor Band. Also, I'll just note that the band will be performing in Mark Twain in Exhibition at Madera County this coming Saturday. Lady Laker volleyball, they were in tournament, so they got to go on to that at Apollo this past weekend. And then, September 30th to October the 6th, they have requested a trip very similar to what our baseball and softball teams have been doing for a number of years, and that will be during fall break, and this is in Destin, Florida for a volleyball tournament. And then, the Drama Club, September 5th to Cumberland County Playhouse in Crossville, Tennessee, it's for live performance of All Shook Up. I recommend approval of the out-of-state and/or overnight trips.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, out-of-state overnight trips as presented. I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Vazuk?
Next item is fundraiser approvals.
So, Jamestown Elementary School has submitted two fundraiser requests, both starting August, September, August the 10th and going through. The T-shirt one will end September 30th, and the Buy a Chair is ongoing, isn't it, Ms. Blanketship? So, Jamestown Elementary School T-shirts, and then Buy a Chair, Take a Seat, just a fundraiser to purchase more seats, chairs there at Jamestown Elementary School. I recommend approval of the school-wide fundraisers as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to have effect on the fundraisers.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Vazuk?
Review of procedure 03.123A.P. to leave request form and statement.
So, this is just a board procedure, does not require board approval, just required that you all review it. This is the procedure for leave request. In the past, for the past few years, we've had to have them notarized, but the legislature has changed that, we just need to update the form to note that now it kinda goes back to how it was. You know why you need to be off work, if it's sick leave or jury duty or whatever, it's school activity, you sign off on it, and then your supervisor signs off on it, and you no longer have to, now they take the notary away, and trust me, every school is in celebration, are they not? Yes, because that's quite the hassle, to turn them in and then get them notarized every time. Of course, all of our, a lot of secretaries were notaries to do that, so that's just a procedure for you all to review.
Next item, the approval of school instructional schedules.
Okay, again, this is something we do at the start of every school year, to document knowing each school's daily master schedule of instruction, reflecting the minimum of 360 minutes or six hours of instruction per day. All five schools in Russell County School District meet this minimum school term requirement for the 23-24 school year, based on a traditional school calendar, that handout that you'll see notes each school's starting in time. Of course, all of our schools are on 170 days of instruction, and all of them have a minimum of that 1,062 hours of instruction. So, I recommend that each school's master schedule of instruction be approved as presented.
I'll make a motion to have effect.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Vazuk?
Next item is data security.
This is a yearly requirement for Mr. Bell to talk to the board about data security.
Yeah, there you go. You do have your packets there, the couple guides that we go by. Of course, KD has implemented a data security breach best practice guide that we have to go by if we do have a breach of security. And of course, Mr. Ford said this is an annual thing that we have to go through, so this isn't the first time we're seeing this, the same thing, actually. But there's just steps in place that we have to go through if, you know, a kid's security is breached electronically or a faculty member as far as that goes, whether it be phishing email, or anybody just trying to gather information on the kids, and things we have to go through to, you know, to meet those requirements and try to figure out where it came from and that type of thing, so it's the same as last year.
Many attempts are made on school districts.
Many attempts. I think daily across the state, we have about 800, and some of the D-LoX attacks that try to get, you know, shut internet down statewide and everything, so it's bumped up from years past, but it happens daily.
And there's many things that are in place, for instance, if someone wants to change their direct deposit, we don't take that on email, you have to come in, because email gets hacked too easily, so there's a lot of things behind the scene, you know, password security, a lot of those things, so.
And this comes down to the software we use for internet filtering, and that kinda plays a role in that, for our current bills and all that kinda stuff, so it's all incorporated into this data security.
Yeah, and again, I think we've talked about this before, but if a student, even at 3:00 at night in the morning, is on either one of our school-issue devices or logged in on through an account with us, and they, you know, if they were to say something self-harm or abuse situation, and they're doing that, we get an alert, and if it's in the middle of the night, they call, otherwise, we get a series of emails. Mr. Bell and I are on the first series, and then it kicks over and adds other people to it. So, there is many evenings and then throughout the day that if a student were to do something troublesome, sometimes they copied in lyrics to a song, haven't they, Mr. Gray, or Mr. Aaron, like last night? They do things like that. It sounds a lot more troublesome than what it is, but they're just copying things, but I just want you all to know, there's a lot of things in place that protects students when they're on our school devices, but we've had to reach out to a lot of families about some troublesome things, and kids have got counseling as a result of that, or, you know, just kinda opened up some doors and made some parents aware of some things, so it's a good thing, but it does restrict students' activities. Not that they're not actively trying to find ways around those restrictions, but it's a good thing. Appreciate what Mr. Bell and his team does. Anything else, Mr. Bell?
No, unless there's any questions.
Next item on the agenda is personnel reports.
Personnel reports, Emma Shacco, Russell Springs Elementary School, hired instructional assistant. Stacy Hopper, Salem Elementary School, hired instructional assistant. Melissa Redman, James Elementary School, food service manager. Candace Brockman, hired as a cook and cashier at Jamestown. Whitney Bell, Salem Elementary School, hired cook cashier. Haley Lindsay, District, hired as a substitute teacher. And Kyle Blue, Russell County Middle School, hired as sixth grade girls' middle school basketball coach. Susan Hadley, Russell County Middle School, bookkeeper. Kristy Campbell resigned as head cheer coach at Russell County Middle School. Valerie Gregory, Russell County High School head swim coach. Emily Hamilton, for middle school and high school, assistant volleyball coach. Christine Bunch transferred to exceptional ed, she was, prior to that, she was teaching as one of the intervention positions. Rachel Miller, Russell County High School, hired assistant boys golf coach. And Felicia Van Arnsdale, hired as intervention remediation teaching position one year at the high school. Brooke Pierce, hired administrative assistant at the high school. Heather Stargill, hired as district attendant preschool teacher. Sheeta Robertson, retiring as a bookkeeper at Russell County Middle School. Mary Beth Price, retiring as a bus driver. Brittany Sterns resigned as an instructional assistant at Jamestown, she will remain on the classified substitute list. Elizabeth Zazan, Jamestown Elementary School, resigned as instructional assistant. Shannon Stevens, Russell County High School, resigned from bass fishing coach. Kevin Kemp, at the district, changed from standby to full-time bus driver. Kayla Jefferson, from standby to full-time bus driver. Tom Jesse, status changed from substitute to full-time bus driver. Grayson Abel, hired as a classified substitute position. Beverly Kelsey is a district hired food service substitute. And Lacy Wright is a district hired food substitute. Alex Multer, hired substitute teacher position. Heather Wolf, Russell County High School, resigned as instructional assistant. Nixie Kellum, Russell County High School, resigned as instructional assistant. Dennis Shelton, resigned, Russell County High School, senior naval science instructor, he's going back to South Carolina. And Mr. Tiller, Gerald Tiller, Russell County High School, resigned as custodian. First of the year hire, there's a lot to go through.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to have a jury.
All in favor? Okay, thank you all.